Pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As required by section eighty-four dash one four one two subsection eight of Nebraska statutes, notice is hereby given that a copy of the open meetings act is posted for your examination on the wall inside the door to the city council chambers. Uh, before we have roll call, I'd like to welcome all our guests tonight to my crowd here. Do we have roll call please?
George Klein.
Here.
Miles Bannon.
Present.
Mark Graves.
Here.
Shane Shepherd.
Here.
Joe John Drew, absent.
Did we get a motion for approval of the agenda?
I made a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second that. Motion by Mark, seconded by Shane, for approving the agenda. Yeah.
Klein.
Yes.
Bannon.
Yes.
Graves.
Yes.
Shepherd.
Yes.
Okay, can I have get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion to approve of the consent agenda.
Second that.
Motion by Shane, seconded by Mark, approve the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of minutes of the city council meeting from August nineteenth. Uh, behind the correspondence tab is a copy of a letter addressed to the mayor and the city council from the Institute of Justice. Uh, the letter concerns city governments and imposition of fees on food truck owners. Uh, for general information and no action needed. Um, there are no minutes from other boards and commissions. Special designated licenses that were administratively approved with the ridge for the Chatterton State College rodeo fundraiser. Compared around September sixth and seventh. And an application for the ridge for the Chatterton State College rodeo fundraiser. Um, I think this is, yeah, is approved. Uh, item B on the agenda is ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine. Um, ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is before the council for his third and final reading. Please read ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine by title.
An ordinance to establish the amount of certain fees and taxes charged by the city of Chatterton for various services including but not limited to building in use, zoning, library, occupation licensing and pet licensing, water, sewer and drainage systems and facilities of the city for residential users and commercial users, including industrial users of the city of Chatterton for the twenty twenty-four dash twenty twenty-five fiscal year to provide for the repeal of conflicting ordinances to provide for an effective date.
I move that ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine be approved on its third and final reading.
Second that. Motion by Miles, seconded by Shane, approve ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine as a third final reading. Um, discussion wise, since we have a nice crowd here, I think maybe we ought to go over the changes that uh this means and what ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is. Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine has been noted was the set fees that the city charges for various items. Um, one important thing was L B six eighty-five recently passed by the state legislature, which should effect July nineteenth of this year. Legislative bill prohibits the city from levying or imposing any tax on any mechanical amusement devices. Um, for this reason, the fees were taken out of the ordinance and that's been added. Other changes that are noted, carousel hangers was a hundred and thirty dollars a month, it went to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Lock hangers daily handle was fifty dollars a day, sixty dollars per day. And all the courts are probably to note that the aquatic standard has been no changes in those fees. Out of interest to a lot of constituents of the city of Chatterton. Uh, moving a body inside the cemetery was two thousand dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. Moving a body outside of the cemetery, five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. Um, the solicitors' fees, they were annual of two hundred dollars, that went to two fifty. Per week of fifty dollars went to a hundred and per day twenty dollars went to fifty dollars. And those same amounts of increased rates applied to mobile food vendors, the annual two fifty. Per week a hundred dollars or per day of fifty dollars. Um, credit card transactions had been only imposed on utility bills and now it's going to be charged two and a half percent on any all, all uses of the credit card. Um, and franchise fee, um, for electricity, going from public access to districting of gross revenues after January first. There were a number of changes in the extended services, Chatterton transit. Most of those concerned with uh we were, Chatter, city of Chatterton's acquiring a van to use. Fuel mileage and a bus and so those are low, those are lowered fees in that area. Um, if you have any interest in that, just call me and I'll. Please introduce yourself, uh, your resident.
Hey, my name is Brenton Ritzler and I live here in Chatterton. And is that what you want? Um, I'm the owner proprietor and on the stock catering. We are a mobile catering big truck carrying.
Yeah, yes.
Um, we do catering, uh, rich trucks for a fully licensed business. Um, I guess my question that I offer you guys is that, you know, the, oh, this is. I don't think it was because of the kinds of brick and mortar restaurants right now that not only are we having to pay for it, but I saw it was a common problem as well, additionally starting with the road. Um, that's my complaint still, I don't think our home stock or even the working home. And I see that there are more than one, you know, it's just a matter of time before we can go to the mall.
No, not unless you're for certain trade, uh, something, something. You know, they, they have rent and order their buy their building and pay the taxes. Yes.
Oh, fair, I, I'm the owner of the family business, I, I don't know what to talk about. I, I don't see it coming up to quite, I mean, why is it not you? You're not just a different, and it's not for.
Well, in, in, in my opinion, the two hundred and fifty dollars annual fee off the whole year is very, very reasonable. Yeah, I haven't seen the r- regulations or still to talking about the registration process. And if you've gone through some type of preliminary one, that's all in good.
Set up the, broke down the new form for mobile food vendors. One of those is providing you with a plan for our trash, one of them is providing you with permission slips from private property owners. Where we set up, I mean, I can provide with you insurance, that's not a problem. But I don't understand why you would need it when I'm not setting up on public property, I'm not setting up on same property. I'm just trying to understand, if you really want to level the playing field, then why are we paying more than the restaurants? Then it must be a business, I'm helping, I'm helping, I'm helping. I am a member of the Chatterton Chamber of Commerce, all small businesses.
Thank you for doing that.
So, what's up?
Thank you for being a member of the chamber.
Well, what does it get me though, it gets me an additional fee that other small businesses don't have.
I would, well, you have this fee, they have a lot of other fees.
I saw, yeah, fifteen dollars a year for a, you know, a bathroom license, fifteen dollars a year, yeah. Um, I'm still trying to understand why food vendors have a fee that, that other businesses in town don't? When we're most of our members of the same chamber of commerce, we have small businesses loans in this town. I just help me understand that.
Well, we'll, we'll have, sometime we'll have a discussion, but I, I, I have a tax accountant and I see the bills and the way of property taxes and everything else.
So if I took a smaller way of doing business, I need extra fees? Because I chose not to purchase an actual building? I mean, I do have an actual building, I purchased my home. There's other businesses in this town, small businesses, I went and got a massage out of the house on Chatterton Avenue, last week. It's out of their house. I also have a brick and mortar house that my businesses, that's the address of my business. So.
But you don't operate your business out of your home.
Massages and different things out of their homes, do they get charged fees?
They have to get a special permit to operate that business if, if it's not, if it's not properly zoned.
If it's out of the residents on Chatterton Avenue, I don't know what to tell you about that. But I.
They would be in the, you'd have to look at the zoning in that area.
And I, I know you guys went into an executive session probably to discuss the season's subcutters about from the attorney's office a few weeks ago. Um, unfortunately, I don't see anybody here from that office, but, you know, if it's a little difficult. I mean, if they actually run cases of having councils discriminate against other small businesses, why aren't these fees just wiped out if we're a small business in this town? You want to charge ones coming out from out of state or out of town, I completely get that. If those of us that have shattered addresses and are shattered residents, we should not have fees.
Thank you for your comment, you know, you, you, you touched on the reason that these things are. Because the majority, ninety percent of the people who operate my gifts, uh, food trucks, food trailers, probably not residents of the city of Chatterton.
And maybe they're not, and if they're coming in from out of town, then maybe they are actual solicitors in this town. But I'm not going door to door and when it comes down to it, I have friends who are in favor, I'm a mobile caterer, not a mobile caterer. So, one of the practical about things, we need that. But, um, one of the things I would really like to talk to the board maybe for rest is the caring of safety to our paper when you guys first started talking about the safety of our food. Just want to make sure that our residents are safe, you're safe in this, even if some of our food isn't safe. And that would be slander, reliable, great paper, and I think that'd be correct.
Thank you. Yes, please give me your name and address, please.
So my name's David Nalart, I, uh, currently we own the story thing over here on the first. I have a lot of out here in Chatterton, actually live east of town. Um, I'm actually the food truck guy, okay, I make food trucks, sell food trucks, I own food trucks, okay? So, my question for you guys is this annual fee, is this per truck or per business?
Well, I don't think, I, I assumed it was per truck. I don't anticipate having a large business that has eight trucks going around Chatterton. Cause we don't have that many needs if I don't believe that many trucks going around Chatterton.
Okay, so, I don't actually set up in town, I do more events than anything. Because, I mean, we have a lot of down, I don't mean, but, you know, if we want to have an event, that's what my intent is to actually do that. But the way the food trucks operate in town, I still do not pursue much, still be over here with that. We do some other things, but my question is then, okay, the health and safety, I think that was my biggest concern.
Yeah, we have water, we have to have.
No, I, I think you, you touched on a point there. If someone's not, if they're registered with the state, we say that's okay. That, that's what I would say personally.
Okay, so.
And, and so, s- sometimes, I, I, it's probably hard to believe, but I believe there might be some people that just say, oh, let's start, start doing this, get it, getting proper licenses from the state. And I think that's what we're, we're looking for in the registration process to say, can you check that box? And once it's checked, we think it's okay.
Okay, so then I have.
There's no reason to, to not trust that.
Okay, so now I have a bigger question for you guys, okay? So the people that set up a lemonade stand on their front corner, oh, there you go, okay? Do they have to have a license? I mean, I'm.
I, I, I'm not gonna get into that, I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so here's the deal, I have lemonade truck, okay? That is literally a lemonade, that's all it is.
Yeah.
So, therefore the lemonade don't have that license. But what about like our, our thing that we have set up by Coca Jack, the almonds that come in on Saturdays set up there? Donuts, all this stuff, are you going to require them to have, like?
I assume that they are, do have a license, paying that, that.
Well, they probably should have a solicitor. Because I'm gonna equate this, I'm gonna equate this with solicitors. And in fact, we could have put these type, your type of vending machine vehicles under solicitors. And the solicitor fee is exactly the same for trucks as for out, uh, for solicitors. And it doesn't say you're a solicitor from out of town, it's just a solicitor. Would you are going on the road to do business, that's part of what you do, you find your customers, a way for them to work, okay? So, in a sense we're treating, we're not taking you and singling you out of that. I, I don't care what's in the paper, I'm doing on this document right now. There have been discussions about how to deal with this, as you're already in the law, it sets us, it is an issue of the place as well. But from our standpoint today, we're treating you as solicitors just like we do anybody else's solicitor, solicitor in Chatterton. The fees are the same as for other solicitors. So that's, I mean, I think we're trying to be fair in that sense, that's why the fees are the same.
I think we don't have a problem with it, cause I can create a, I can.
Yeah, I'm sure that most of them are higher than that.
And I would, and I would tell you, there's, there's discussions about more regulation of this, we're gonna go slow and try to do the right thing, okay? Cause we don't need to have attorneys from other places sending us letters, I get that. But that's, at this point in time, we're just dealing with a fee, which we're dealing with even though they're labeled separately in here, but it is a solicitor fee, which we charge all solicitors in the city of Chatterton. So, that's just, as I was listening to the discussion, I wanted a break so I could kind of make that clear. We're not trying to, um, discriminate against anybody, she had made the statement about out of staters. You can't treat out of staters different than in staters.
Right.
That's discrimination as well. So if you're a solicitor or you have a mobile food vendor truck, you're gonna pay the solicitor fee basically.
Well, I hope when you get to that point that you, when you make the rules of the food trucks in town, I am a hundred percent available to help you, cause I do a gazillion different. I mean, I'm, I leave October, I go down and do the annual road inspection, I go to the U N A R in Las Vegas. So, I mean, I do, and if you deal with part town, I mean, Las Vegas has, when they come do your inspection, believe me, it's an hour and a half process and it's very serious. So, you know, I have Maricopa County in Arizona and it's the same here, so.
It's a bit evolutionary up here.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's new to everyone, I mean, this is the last five years, it's become a popular thing.
Yep.
So, I mean, we necessarily try to vibrate and do the right thing by everybody. Um, and I'd say some misses on that, but, you know, we'll try to go through that process slowly. But this is a solicitor.
And that part should be left.
Well, we get a label of that and as we go forward and make, uh, but that's what it amounts, because the fees are the same.
I have a binary question, is it per unit or per hit?
I, I would say the way I read it is per vendor. So we have multiple trucks and one vendor, that would be my talking out loud, thinking out loud, because it says vendors.
Right, that's what I have to do, but I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna only.
I think it also makes sense to consider whether your operations that are gonna have five, six trucks that are basically different. And all that cover, so it's silly, I think, but the way it's like, I would, um, this one group is per, so this is a different fee. I think it's an end fee, it's right there in the name, but I, I think that I would encourage cities to have to, to treat it as a per vendor fee.
It's gonna be my. Yeah, okay, that's all I had, thanks guys for your.
We've come up here, cause we're broadcasting live on television and we want everyone in the public to be able to hear.
Well, he had just brought up that you guys, well, and it even said in something that I read that you'd put together a group to actually talk to different cities and to find out, you know, what would be fair. Who did that and who did they talk to? Because I know there were, a lot of us, we've talked to each other and no, they didn't talk to any of us here in town that were aware. Um, so who did you talk to? And what towns did you call? Cause Rapid City, their fee's a hundred bucks, Hot Springs, a hundred bucks, Crawford, a hundred bucks. Lyons, nothing, there is no fee in Lyons as long as you're on private property. There's no fee in Gordon as long as you're on private property. So all around us, a hundred bucks, about what the average fee is. Just throwing that out there.
Okay.
You want to level the playing field, you want to do all this stuff, you say you've talked to other places, you say you've talked to other vendors, but yet, who? We've talked to each other, we know you didn't talk to any of us. It's all sham.
Alright.
My name's Clay Anderson, uh, live here in Chatterton, bear with me, do some last minute notes. Uh, alright. How much revenue? How much revenue do food vendors actually bring in to the city of Shatteren every year, roughly? You guys know?
I really couldn't say, but I...
Do you think it would be enough to even cover the salary of one council member? The six food trucks that I see on a regular basis? So, what my question's going to be is, what's the point in raising these fees if it's not even gonna cover any costs to the city?
Yeah, and the, one of the reasons the city's costs keep going up is American companies, and lies. It's just one of those unnecessary evils of inflation.
Alright, uh... And then, I'll touch up again with, uh, they're operating on private businesses, on private property. So again, that has nothing to do with the city's business or the zoning commission. Uh, so I don't even understand why, why that is even an issue with the city or...
I don't understand.
If they're operating on private property and they have an agreement with that other, with that business, then what's, how does that entail being the city's or the zoning and planning commission's business? Cause it doesn't.
Again, we charge, we charge solicitors to go outside and have a little bit of it. It's the same, same type of theory.
And do, do we check for, just make sure they're up with states? That, I'm not...
That, that, I can't tell you.
Okay.
And, okay, so with insurance and health and safety, again, it took me five minutes to find the OSHA regulation, which, bring it up here real quick, is order nineteen points. That's federal law that regards mobile food vendors. And then the state of Nebraska has their own, uh, which I don't have it with me on, at the moment.
Through the Department of Agriculture, is that correct, Rick? Then you get your health and service, uh, through the Department of Agriculture?
Yeah. Department, okay?
Yeah, Agriculture, I think it is.
So, with that, how, why was that even brought up in the, why was safety ever brought up? When it took me five minutes to find those answers?
Well, I think that it was brought up just to ensure that everyone that had a food truck was following the regulations put, set forth by the Department of Agriculture. So that if someone came into town, they were following the health regulations that you have to follow. I think that's what it was, just to make sure that someone didn't come into town and not follow the same regulations that you have to follow.
That's all I, that's all I'm gonna do. Uh, and to touch up on, so you, uh, paid quite a few fees everywhere you go, right?
Yep.
That adds up pretty quick. Right?
Yeah.
That's a lot for a small business, for operating costs. So, why would we want to be a part of nickel and diming these small businesses that are just trying to get by? If we wanna be competitive with the other area communities, then we need to show that we treat these small businesses better than the other area small communities. It, to me, this just looks like extortion. To get more money.
I, I cannot see where a two hundred and fifty dollar annual fee could be considered extortion.
Well, there's really no need to raise these fees, cause it's not, even with inflation, these fees are almost worthless. I mean, it's not gonna cover the cost of even your temporary employees for the city. So, really...
It does take time.
And then, you know, again, with leveling the playing field, do they still have to operate between nine A.M. and five P.M. like other solicitors?
That is another regulation.
I mean, that is, so...
Yep, that's in that guideline also.
How is it that, you know, brick and mortars can stay open almost as late as they want, but mobile food vendors have to operate until five P.M. and they miss that huge supper rush? That's a lot of business that they can lose.
So, was, did you see a...
You know, you wanna treat them like solicitors, but they're not solicitors, you want...
Did you see a specific policies that the food trucks can only operate between certain, where did you see that?
It was, it's in the Solicitor Ordinance.
So that's a solicitor and maybe not a food truck?
That might be a reason. That, that's one of the reasons I think we were trying to split it up from the solicitors so that we could look at those things and make appropriate guidelines.
For the whole food vendors, it was like an application that the city had themselves. And the end of it, there was a list of different things that was providing a, a plan for our trash. So it's, I mean, it was ridiculous stuff. There was like, do you ask a restaurant for all of this stuff? I don't think you do.
Well, you don't, you don't, because the restaurant signs up for water, sewer and sanitation, and it's all arranged.
Well, and I pay for trash for my house, which is where my business is located.
But, well, but, you're, the fee that you charge, pay for trash at your house does not include what you're paying for your business. I pay a fee for sanitation in my house, I pay a fee for sanitation in my office.
And the private businesses have allowed me to use their dumpster also. So, as long as I'm at private business setting up, and they are gonna allow me to use their dumpster, then I'm gonna do that.
Well, I think part of the problem is that you've seen a form, which I don't, I think we saw for five minutes, and sent it back and said, okay, show us something, come up with a plan. And you're taking it as, this is what's happening, and that's not necessarily what is happening. Like, uh, Adam said, this is a process that we're working through. I think there was a plan to reach out to the mobile food vendors to get their input. I don't think that's, apparently from you, that hasn't taken place yet. But I think that was part of the, the process that was gonna take place. So, I, I think some of this is the cart before the horse. I think, uh, maybe there's, people are getting up in arms before there's actually, there's nothing really set in stone, except for the two hundred, going from two hundred to two fifty.
And I think all of that stuff should be discussed and figured out before you vote on this.
Uh, last issue, uh, my time in the Marine Corps, one of the big things was operational risk management. With that cease and desist from the Institute of Justice, if they were to go through with their suit, would the city actually be able to risk possible financial suicide? Which I think it would happen, just looking at the results of what this firm has done in the past in bigger cities, much bigger than Shatteren. Uh, and, uh, one was in North, like Charleston, North Carolina was one of them, I believe. Uh... What's the city planning on doing with that, with that cease and desist?
First of all, I don't think it's a cease and desist, it's just an informational letter giving us his historical background on what's going on in other places that this law firm has dealt with. Nowhere in this letter do I find the word cease and desist or stop what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay, I, I just wanna clarify. I mean, it's, it's, those are legally, that's, that's a fair distinction, so I would just point that out. You know, I read through it, and they talk about what they've done and where they've been in other places and, uh, how this is problematic, um, for the businesses, which any kind of fees it is. But I don't see anywhere in here that says, you know, cease and desist your activities. And quite honestly, we, we've really only had some discussion about creating regulations for food trucks. There hasn't been, I haven't been involved in a sit-down discussion as to hard, I haven't seen the form you're talking about. Plus, we haven't, other than adding this to our fee schedule in an, in an analogous situation to a solicitor, that's about all we've done, or even discussed doing at this point. So there hasn't been time to reach out to the vendors in town and say, what do you think about this? To my knowledge, I haven't been part of those discussions, maybe there has been, but I haven't.
I, I've never, I haven't been a part of anything. And it's hard to, you know, ca- cater, I consider that, you know, a different business. Well, you're, you're catering, you're...
There's, 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 there's content to provide people with, you know. A vendor's somebody that sells food, two hour time job. That would be the, you know, that would be a distinction for me. If I'm a caterer, I'm gonna hire you, or you're gonna hire me, I'm gonna do my thing for you. But that would be a difference. If I'm pulling up, have permission, good, and stuff, hanging out by sign, if the public's coming in, that's okay. Maybe wrong, but that's the way I would treat it.
That's all I've got, thank you.
Thanks, Clay.
Hi, I'm Tanya Watson, I'm just a, a Dawes County resident, I live outside of town here. I just came for informational purposes, I don't own a, a food truck or anything. But I sit here and I'm a little bit confused because I have Mr. Edmund saying that, um, they are considered solicitors. And then over here, I think it was Mr. Graves, said, no, no, you're not a solicitor.
For purposes of fee equity, we're treating them as solicitors.
Okay.
The fees are the same.
So, I guess, my question is, to me, a solicitor is somebody who comes up and knocks on my door and says, hey, I'm selling candy bars for the Boy Scouts. Is that not what soliciting is, as opposed to somebody? I, I've not seen the food truck vendors that I know of standing out soliciting, you know, going down the street and trying to get people to purchase their...
But they're on, they're on, and then again, speaking out loud, it is, I suspect that they're parking. And I'll use, I don't know where they park in town, somewhere along highway seven in town. They have taken their product to a public place to solicit business from individuals in public.
I guess, how is that any different than Taco John's that has their business in a public place that is soliciting?
They own the property, they own the property that they're on.
Okay, so if they're set up at a private property, we're, we're delving into private property rights here.
And, and as the letter indicates that we receive, which it may be out there, maybe not, this is an evolving area. I mean, this is, communities like this, and in Nebraska and other places, maybe in Maricopa County where I grew up, they've been dealing with it for a long time. So they, they probably are over-regulated, I would guess, just knowing that, or, or Henderson, Nevada, I'm guessing. But for a community like this, we're trying to do this the right way, okay? So...
I'm just asking some honest questions as far as the...
So, so, I, I, I think dialogue with, I think dialogue with everyone. Whether you be a vendor or a brick and mortar, there should be discussions with everybody here, talking about what, what's gonna happen.
I was just listening to the private property aspect of it. I strongly believe in private property, people have rights on their property.
There's also the private property owners, not recently, but in the past that have caused, that we didn't give them the permission to be here.
Okay, that's a different story.
And they pull up and you have to deal with them.
Right.
So it's kinda making it a lot more clear. And it's still a lot of...
And I guess, as far as your statement is, you can't treat out of state the same as you treat in-state? I don't agree with that, because the state of Nebraska does that all the time, if you go down...
You can have an in-state, I, I, I'll, I'll backtrack that a little bit, you're not, you can pay an out-of-state fee and in-state fee, okay?
Yeah, if you go the state far off, you're gonna have a different...
For a purpose, we'll probably have to look at that as well. But we have to be very careful about discrimination, as the letter that we got. Okay? So, there's, there's, I'm not sure what we talked about, but if you're dealing with a fee that solicitors have to pay, which would seem to be, in my mind, and maybe I'm wrong, I could be convinced otherwise, but seems to be fair because there are people here that come and wanna do business in this town, or people that literally don't wanna do business in this town. We're not charging more to be a vendor in this town. We'll try to keep it on a kew at this point, that's the thought.
Okay, and then I guess Mr. Klein made a statement about, um, you know, looking for revenue. I can't remember exactly, but I came away with the feeling that costs are rising in the city, so where can we go look for money? And this is where we can get some money. And that didn't sit too well with me, so I don't know if you wanna clarify that?
No, no, that's not what I meant, I meant that to help compensate for the wages and other expenses of the city, um...
You're looking for someplace else to tap, so you can raise that.
If, if we're going to have any regulation at all, and I think it's better to have this regulation, uh, or some guidelines, that we want to follow, such as, yes, you have a sales tax requirement, yes, you've been approved by the Department of Agriculture, you know, rather than forgetting, forgetting about all that stuff, and then wait until there's a problem, and then call the police chief and say, solve our problem.
I'm not, I...
So, so it's easier to do it administratively than to involve...
So is there not some, I, as I told you, I'm not a food truck owner, so I don't know what the process is that they have to go through. But is there not some way when they get these permits, is there not, they don't have to come to the city then and, and file them, or is...
We, we would be the last to know, because they would, they should be, you know, registering with Department of Revenue, get their sales tax license, and that can cover the virtually any, the whole state of Nebraska. If you go to another state, then you gotta repeat it with each state, and of course, each place where you sell your product has a different rate, so you have to be knowledgeable about all that stuff. And then, any applicable food regulations are administered by the State Department. And probably, like Mark said, the Department of Agriculture is involved in there.
And these are...
So, you, you guys just are trying to...
And, and we just wanna be able to check those things. And regarding the, the hours, the food truck should be instead of complaining to us, probably saying, hey, it's good that you pull us out, kinda recognize us individually instead of a solicitor. And, you know, these are what's a reasonable accommodations. Instead of five o'clock, maybe it's, you know, six o'clock, people are maybe, and be changes with the, the weather, the wintertime versus the summertime.
I would say to that, that if they wanna be out there freezing their butt off at nine o'clock at night in a blizzard, they have the right to sell their food at nine o'clock in a blizzard. Um, but I guess for the brick and mortar businesses, you don't, do you go in and, and check up on all of their things that you're saying that you do with, you're going to do with the...
Well, if, if somebody said, John Doe opened up a restaurant and he hasn't been inspected by the Department of Agriculture, uh, we would probably take action, just...
So I guess what is the difference?
Contact John Doe and say, is that true?
Why can't you treat the food truck businesses in that manner? Is my question.
Cause we're here today, gone tomorrow.
And I would say, as far as you're level, uh, leveling the playing field, every brick and mortar restaurant in this town has the ability, if they desire, to go get a food truck and to do exactly what these people are trying to do. So I think the, the playing field is level. Um, they have the ability to do what they want to do, they have the ability to get a grant or get a loan, find a brick and mortar, and do that if they desire. So that your, your claim that this is to level the playing field, I don't think is a valid, I don't think that's valid. And if you're not going to hold the brick and mortar to the same standard, you were saying if John Doe calls up and says, I don't think they've been inspected, then we'll look into it, but you're not taking that stand with the food truck owners.
Well, we make it a little easier for them, cause they can do that, you know, we, if we develop the application process of some type of form where we can check off the block, then we're...
Why does it matter when you don't have that for the brick and mortar, I guess is my question? Cause you don't have that same, you're not treating these two businesses, these two food in, you know, businesses the same.
Probably because of-
Why, why small businesses have an application process at all? Because of that, it's certainly the same, because brick and mortar is here all the time, but some food trucks are here all the time. And we don't know who's coming in and coming out, so they're not the same, so we get that set.
And I would just say, as far as, as just an average consumer, if someone brought up the lemonade stand, people selling cookies on the corner, you know, my kids growing up have done that. Buyer beware is something that we as Americans have just been able to grow up, and, you know, if I wanna go to his food truck, and I walk up and it looks pretty dirty, and I'm thinking, I have the choice to walk away and not to eat there, I guess.
I love your approach, I wish it was that way.
Well, I just think there needs, you talk about level playing field, and it doesn't seem like it's level. And I'm just here as an absolute consumer, I have no stake, I don't own a food truck, I don't own Taco John's, you know, I'm just somebody who lives in the county, I shop here, and I think, if you want a level playing field, then it needs to be level across the board, so I appreciate the time, thank you.
One thing I was gonna ask, just for clarification, events, okay? So, I'm gonna ask, like, fur trade days, are you going to require food trucks to have a license to come there? Or if it's an event, they do not?
Okay, I'll refer that to fur trade days for you.
The, so far as it's been in the past, this, everything has been done under solicitor's licenses in the past, it was all pretty loose. The city has not traditionally gone to every vendor at the trader's market and said, you have to have a solicitor's license. The license that they're paying to the event, and the information that they're providing to the event, if there's anybody on city staff who would like to say otherwise, the licensing and registration for the events covers their presence for that event. Most of the food vendors that have come to fur trade days, I believe, have been, have visited other times, there's a couple that were just there for fur trade days, but, so far as I understand it, that's the way it's worked in the past. Not to say that it should work that way in the future.
I believe that's why it's per week for that, also listed.
Right.
Okay, the only question I have, okay, is to level the playing field, okay? So if I come in here, and I, and I do, I come and buy my license like I'm supposed to, whatever, okay? If I go to fur, so, what I just got the vibe here, is if I only do events, I don't have to have this license. Is that correct? Because that's all I do, is events, so I-
I'm gonna disagree with what our councilman said, I believe under this, you're coming to an event for a day, you pay the daily fee.
Okay.
That would be, that would be my interpretation of the way this is set up.
To be clear, that's the way, that's the way it was when we were not doing a very good job of keeping up with it. I think that by splitting this out into a separate category and taking it out of solicitors, I think you're right, Adam, I think it doesn't make sense to have, to have, you know, say that, hey, as part of your, if you're gonna be here, yeah, you can be part of the event, but you also do have to have your food vendor license to the city, even if, you know, if it's just a day.
There's no real reason to put a per-day fee on there, or a per-week fee on there, if we're not gonna take those fees for those events.
Correct.
It doesn't make any sense.
Correct. And that's why, to me, I think if you're gonna have it, because, I'm gonna be honest with you, I come to fur trade days, there's people that whip in Saturday, whip out of here, take their cash, get the hell out of town. I mean, it's very straight, I mean, they ain't spending a dime in this town, and so, and they don't have to buy a license. And because they only come to events here. And, as like, my son questioned me of why I bought my vendor, why I pay this, because I only do events. Well, because that's what it is, it, you know, it's a license, buy it, be done with it. You know, I do Rapid City, I do Tuesday night food trucks in Rapid City. I would be there tonight, but it got canceled because of the fires, so it's, it is the way it is. You know, we pay fees all over we go, so, I just wanna clarify that these vendors that come in for fur trade days, or whatever, that Harvest Moon thing, they have their licenses too. And I think it needs to be enforced, so if it's the police department that has to enforce it, or whoever, it needs to be enforced. And we get a copy of it, we attach it to our windows, we prove that we have it, so.
Agree.
Okay, that's all I have, thanks, guys.
My name's Donna Brest, I'm currently the city clerk, so with the city of Shadron. As all of you know, I'm a short-term city clerk. So I won't be seeing the rest of this process unless I decide to participate as a volunteer, as an interested party.
Or open a food truck.
Ah, there you go, or as a council member, we'll see. But I've been the city clerk for a few years, and so a lot of what's been said tonight, I could offer a lot of the history, and the way things are, the way they are right now. But I'd start with, we did send out notice of a meeting with the mobile food vendors that we're aware of for this Thursday, September fifth, at nine o'clock in this room. And the notice probably went out late, if some of you haven't received it with the holiday. We did send out emails to those, we had email addresses for, and I did hear back from a couple of them last week. So I know some people are receiving that notice, but checking to see how well Thursday goes, and what kind of turnout there is, maybe there'll need to be a second, third, fourth session. It'd be great to have the turnout like you have tonight, and to have that input, because as what's been already said, if there were comments about there already being a group, that's not the case, the planning commission's taken a look at the mobile food vendor issue. The rest has been all city staff. And it would be, we did, we have done a lot of research, we have done a lot of checking with other communities, because we do wanna see what else is out there, and what other communities are doing, what's acceptable and what's not. But as far as a group that's already been formed, we haven't got that far. As the council's aware, when this first came forward, it was the planning commission who'd been looking at the issue. And the form that might be out there and about circulating is a form that the planning commission had proposed, as Councilmember Graves said. There's nothing that's been taken any further with that form. And it's a good starting place, but it's obvious that there's a lot more that needs to go into that. The state of Nebraska recently passed a legislative bill that there is a mobile food truck trailer registry out there that municipalities are supposed to respond to at the end of the year, a list of mobile food vendors that operate in our community. So there is more and more, even on the state level, recognition of the mobile food vendors is something that does need to be looked at. As far as solicitors versus mobile food vendors, the solicitor ordinance that we have, that we've tried ten fours, is way outdated, and we've tried to use that ordinance for all types of sales in Shadron. And the definition of solicitor isn't, doesn't just go door-to-door with sales. It does have terminology in there with being a transient merchant, or somebody who is setting up on the corner, selling rugs and blankets or whatever. But I think the need for the city is, number one, to update that solicitor ordinance. And like I say, we've used that ordinance to try to cover mobile food vendors, and obviously, it isn't a good fit, and it does need work. And so, there's kinda two, two or three separate issues out there. The fee ordinance you're looking at tonight, the issue of solicitors themselves, and the issue of mobile food vendors. And hopefully, it's just not gonna all get thrown together in one size fits all. It's obviously that, that can't happen. But I just wanted to mention, there was something said about tobacco licenses being fifteen dollars, and asking for, you know, to help you understand, that is a fee set by the state of Nebraska. And it's actually fifteen dollars, but if you come in for a license after July one, it goes down to seven dollars and fifty cents. It's crazy, and that fee's been like that forever, but that money actually goes to the school district. So, for the city to recover any kind of money, or pay for administrative work, to issue a tobacco license, administrative, the time it takes to do that, and the paperwork, the license itself, and the postage, there's no way it recovers costs. The liquor licenses have been set years and years and years ago, and that's set by state statute. And the occupation tax for a liquor license at the time, and we're going back many years, that was to cover the cost for a police officer's salary. And obviously, there's no way that happens. But I would just like to clarify the fact that solicitors versus mobile food vendors, hopefully, doesn't get all thrown together and mixed up, because I think it's in everybody's best interest to try to just regulate. And I don't wanna make this sound bad, but to regulate the mobile food vendors in such a way that there is a checklist for, yes, they're registered with the Department of Agriculture, they do have their sales tax permit, they do, not treating, trying to treat them different from a brick and mortar, but just trying to have some regulations in place, and whether that fee is ten dollars to register with the city of Shadron, or whether it's two hundred and fifty dollars, or whether it's five hundred dollars, some municipalities charge. Hopefully, that won't be the main argument of all this. It's just trying to get regulations in place where people are treated consistently and fairly. And right now, as a city clerk with our current solicitor ordinance, it's very hard to enforce that. And the police department tries their best to assist where they can. But a lot of what was mentioned tonight, I hope people show up at the meeting Thursday at nine, and if not, submit their comments in writing, or, Mr. Miller, we've had several conversations, he's brought some great ideas to the table to think about. But there's a lot of work that's gonna have to go into this before anything's finalized. But I hope it's not taken as a negative, I hope it's taken as a right way to do business. And as far as the solicitor ordinance, again, I keep going back to that. But the solicitor ordinance was first put in place for the safety of its citizens. And we're going everything from the blanket rug selling people to the fly-by-nights, people who come in, wanna shingle your roof after a hailstorm. They're here and gone the next day, and we've had no protection for our citizens. So it's, it's a way bigger thing than just trying to pick on one set of business people. I did wanna bring up, and I'll leave it at that, but I think the current city hall staff, police department, and everybody that's been involved in the discussions so far are really taking this serious, and trying again to do what's fair and what's equal. But just like the comments about the hours, there were comments about, because there's been interest in some vendors wanting to do breakfast burritos. There's been interest in some vendors who wanna do the hot dogs, or burritos after the bars close. So there has been discussion to try accommodate that. If the hours need to be from six AM to one, one-thirty PM, no, AM. So I mean, there's a lot of thought going into this, but I hope people won't take that form that was, might be out there circulating from the planning commission as set in stone. Kinda like Councilmember Graves said, there's, when that was presented, it was definitely clear that the whole issue needs more work. But thank you, again, wanted to put the word out there for today, or Thursday at nine o'clock, for anybody who can make it, if you can't, let us know what works for you, and we'll try to schedule a second session, whether it be in the evening or other hours.
Thank you.
May I make a suggestion? It seems to me that the fifty-dollar fee ordinance, increase of fee ordinance, seemed to be a sticking point with some of the food vendors. And there's apparently a meeting that's gonna be set this Thursday, is that something we could potentially table, this fee schedule?
No, we could, we could make a motion to amend the solicitor, probably both the solicitors and the proposed mobile food, and back those up to the old rates.
Until the discussion can take place.
And then pass the fee ordinance without that, and then, not much is gonna change in a year, and see how we are next year when we do this again. Not, as was pointed out, there's not that much money.
If you amend your ordinance, there was no previous fee for mobile food vendors. If you amend your ordinance to go back to the two hundred dollar fee, that's just gonna affect the solicitor's side of it. Because the mobile food vendors, it's new to this ordinance.
But then if we treat them as a solicitor, then are they bound by the hours?
They haven't been by the solicitor's sentence, I don't think they've been treated that way. Solicitor analogy is just for purposes of fairness in the fee, okay? We've never, I don't believe, ever charged a food vendor a solicitor fee, or have we? I don't know, as the office charged two hundred dollars a year for a solicitor fee for a food vendor, previously, okay? So then, yeah, that would go back to that part, if you just amended your ordinance to another.
Wherever we go.
Basically, those two guidelines-
Annual for both of those, just change, a motion to change it to two hundred?
It would just change it back to what the solicitor was, because this wasn't in here.
Yeah. Could we have a motion to change these amounts from two fifty, one hundred and fifty, to two hundred fifty and twenty?
So what you're saying is still keep the food truck portion in there, but drop it back to the two hundred, get rid of the food truck?
You can't amend it to drop the mobile food vendors language, because that's the new language, okay? That's why everybody's here.
Correct, but then one of the, one of the other concerns was then they'd be bound by the solicitor's timeframe. Correct. But then one of the, one of the other concerns was then they'd be bound by the solicitor's timeframe.
If that's how they've been handling it, it's been two hundred dollars. Is that what you've paid in the past? I don't know.
But I don't wanna, I don't wanna. But I don't wanna put them back if they're in the solicitor's pot, that they can't operate past a certain time. If they, if they, I don't wanna limit that if if we put it back. Does that make sense?
I think what Mark's trying to get, can we just table the whole thing until next meeting or what?
You can't really table an ordinance.
For more discussion.
Yeah, this is our third reading.
You're on your third reading. You could table it to come back, I guess. You certainly could table it for the next meeting.
I guess what I, go ahead, Donna.
No, no, I was just gonna say, yes, we have been using the solicitor ordinance for mobile food vendors just because we don't have anything else in place. And so that's the reasoning that they have charged the same fee as a solicitor, which the word solicitor, obviously, by definition in the code, covers a lot of other things than just listing door to door. But but yes, that is what we're charging right now is the same fee as a solicitor. And I think like the city attorney said, whether you table this tonight or whether you take mobile food vendors out of the ordinance, I would think whenever, because municipal code is gonna be, need to be updated. And that's when we were talking the other day, all the other things that are talked about with dealing with mobile food vendors will be covered by the ordinance or by the application itself. But I would think at any time the the fee ordinance could be amended to include the mobile food vendor fees at where wherever you set those to be. But to cover right now for what we're doing, we do use the solicitor ordinance for mobile food vendors. Just not having anything else in place.
Disagree with me, but in looking at all this and what's been proposed here, to me, the difference between the two hundred and two fifty for an annual fee might be an opportunity to actually have this mobile food vendor process starting. I think we'll probably end up with longer hours for them. So to me, it's kind of an opportunity.
It's the beginning of the process, not the end.
Yeah.
Which is what I was gonna say. I think that, I think we need to have a separate category for them. I think covering mobile food vendors under the solicitors, as and as Donna has talked about since the very, this is very first began, is far from ideal. So I think we need to have the separate category. You know, if we're going to, I don't think the fifty dollars is, I guess what I'm hearing is not a discussion about fifty dollars. It's a discussion about confusion and about a lack of clarity about what's happening. And I think that, you know, the fee is not, the, all of this discussion wasn't about fifty bucks. I don't believe. Um, I think this was a discussion about, well, what's going to happen? And that meeting on Thursday is going to be the beginning of the process. I think there's also the level the playing field thing has come up a lot. I don't know in what context that was used, but I think what I would, what I would say though, what I wanna level the playing field for is our local food trucks, who we know, who came voluntarily on their own to get these licenses, even though it's not really a great fit under the solicitors' process. We have a lot of good, honest, hardworking local businesses with food trucks who come in and just voluntarily did this. Um, and I wanna level the playing field between them and somebody who, as they talked about, shows up here today, gone tomorrow. And I think you have to have some level of of information on those vendors because if fly-by-night food rolls in and says, hey, we're here in Shadrin, one day only, we're selling this, this and that, and there's an outbreak of listeria. You know, well, is it, is it buyer beware? That they got listeria? Is it, well, they were on private property. You can give somebody listeria on private property. Um, that's silly. You know, we owe it to our citizens to look out for them to have some protections in place. And I think it's very reasonable to have a vendor license where you come to city hall and as these folks have voluntarily done already, show us a business license, show us your health license, show us your liability insurance, and then you're registered. You're on the books. That way, if something does happen and fly-by-night food rolls in, well, they had to come in and they had to show us their insurance. They had to show us their business license. They have to do, they have to do everything that the honest folks are already doing. And if they do have caused some kind of listeria outbreak, they're on the books for how to go after them. You know, it's not just, well, they said they were from, you know, X, Y and Z city and I guess we'll have to go look into it for recourse. And having, having a formal license that applies to this, rather than trying to shoehorn it and hope everybody's honest, um, makes sense. And this is, you know, we can set the fee tonight, but that doesn't set anything as regards to the application or what documentation they have to show. Ultimately, to me, this is something I think that should be um, supporting of local businesses and supporting our local folks who are already doing the right thing voluntarily and out of pocket. Versus, you know, we talked about the vendors at Fur Trade Days. Just because they hadn't been, doesn't mean they shouldn't be. And I think that they should be. Everybody who does business in the city like this should at least prove that they are a legitimate business. And put their registration on file to say, yep, I'm willing to put my name on the books as a food truck. And if something happens, if there's, you know, if there's some kind of issue, um, here's where you can find me.
And I, and I think that's the important part, again, tying that fee into the registration process. But it's trying to get a process, a registration process in place where we get the word out there as best as we can through the city's website and wherever else we can put it, that if you come to do business in Shadrin, whether you're local or out of town or out of state, you still need to provide that documentation. And tying a fee to that maybe gives it a little bit more, people may pay a little bit more attention to it again, whether it's a ten or fifty dollar or five hundred dollar fee. But we can tell you many stories through the years where before mobile food vendors became as popular as they are, we'd have people come in, drive in, pull up to a place, open their trunk and start selling meat. Packaged, packaged meat out of their trunks. And those things have happened. And so like you said, the citizens deserve some protection from those kind of things happening. And I understand it's buyer beware. But at the same time, the city does owe its citizens. The State Department of Agriculture has representatives across the state who try to cover as much ground as they can and the individual that covers our areas from alliance. But the state must recognize the need that that there needs to be some regulation or some monitoring. I know the mobile food vendors are becoming very popular. And you can tell by the lines at noon and during the the day, the number of people that that take advantage and comments of people support the mobile food vendors because they like the variety of food it offers. So I mean, there's a lot of good that can come from this, but
I think it reassures the citizens and also reassure the other businesses that, yeah, I'm not a sucker for doing this. Everybody who comes in here has to do this and there's not somebody, there's not a, there's not a precedent for people who just show up and do it and don't pay the license and don't have to prove that they are a legit business, you know? I think that's, I think that's the reassurance for our citizens, our community members and also our businesses that, yeah, we're all planned by the same set of rules. And I think this is, you know, like you said, this is just, uh, this is just fair. I think it's, I think it's even for everybody. And I think that this is the exact specifics of the form and how everything works out can be hammered out over time. We don't have to have that decided tonight. And this, ultimately, the council, you know, this, this, we're just passing a fee ordinance. We don't really have anything to say about it right now. It'll come in, it'll come up in the future.
But if you do adopt that fee ordinance, it does take effect October one.
Yep.
So whoever's in.
And it would effectively take food trucks out of the solicitor. So that form that has those restrictive hours, there's no form for food trucks at this point in time. If we leave it in the solicitor, so say we take that mobile food truck out of this ordinance tonight, you will continue to be considered solicitors and bound by the form that you have signed in the past. Just, I'm just clarifying to you as well. Also, you also have the ability to table this tonight if you choose. You have the ability to amend what you're doing. The discussion's getting lengthy.
Can I just have one thing clarified, I guess, what Miles was talking about? Is that whose job then, I guess, I see what you're saying as far as people coming in from out of town, the one night gonna be in Shadrin. Who is, who is going around and making sure when they show up that they have paid the fee? Is that the police department's responsibility? Oh, I just saw Oyster Bob's is here and I gotta go make sure he's got the fee or he's paid the fee. Who, is that the city council members are driving the streets looking for?
We don't get paid enough for that. Traditionally, so far as I understand, I don't think Rick wants us out there doing that. That's traditionally been the role of the police department. If there's a vendor, if there's somebody who's set up, you know, out selling blankets or hocking some kind of like produce out the back of a truck.
So every time they see a new business.
Complaint driven typically.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's gonna be complaint driven typically because this city hall gets more calls from people complaining about things. And then they're gonna contact the police department unless an officer goes up on their own.
This was one of my concerns of the first meeting is the enforcement of it.
Right.
So I reached out to the chief of state, I got a pretty good response back. I'm sure there was a mystery already. It is usually the police department or code enforcement officer that would do the enforcement of this. Both of the agencies I talk to, they're not even touching it. It would be complaint driven. I'll be honest, we're about safety.
Right, right.
And when we're talking safety, perhaps it's about domestic disputes and, you know, fights. I think we got a lot of the things.
And I greatly appreciate your service, all of you. I really thank you so much for you guys, you guys do a good job of protecting us. That's what I was, you know, I'm concerned, that was one concern as far as his statement is, I don't think it should be your job to have to go and say, oh, my goodness, I don't think I've seen that food truck here before. Do they have a license? So in that respect, it really isn't the, you know, there can be people coming in and obviously, and you may not get a consumer complaint. I, if the food's good and people are.
Usually it's gonna be one food truck calling on the out-town food truck saying they're in here. I'm just, that's the reality of it. It's gonna be a local, maybe a local, maybe not. But if somebody that did get their license, they're gonna call on somebody that just showed up and say, hey, you need to check on this truck because they just rolled in.
So then you're just, you're gonna rely on community policing for it to be enforced?
A lot of it, a lot of all policing is complaint driven.
It's the same, that's also the same process for overgrown, you know, vegetation for low-hanging branches. Most of this code enforcement stuff is, it's just based on complaints. And we would hope that, again, like I talked about, being even-handed and leveling the playing field between all these different vendors, that the folks who are paying it are honest. If they're gonna know when somebody rolls in and sets up and they.
Okay, I just want a clarification on whose job it was. And you kinda made it sound like it was all, you know, everybody's gonna be toeing the line and I just, just want a clarification on that. Thank you.
So I am also a concerned citizen of Daz County.
Can you read your name and address?
I'm Lacy Traster and I live outside of town. Um, but I've had a Shadrin address for over twelve years now. And I really appreciate what Marx was trying, uh, Mark Graves was trying to do just now tabling this discussion. Somebody implied that we're getting the cart before the horse by being here tonight. But the fact is, the city council is trying to implement these changes, part of these changes tonight by increasing fees. It is a monumentous increase considering where the fees were at before. And in that process of implementing these fees before there's been any discussion or community hearing or anything of that matter, um, they are creating a legal, an enforcement and administrative nightmare for the city. Um, and so I would really encourage you to consider what Graves, um, was suggesting that this be tabled and that more discussion be held because the city has chose to have their first hearing. Um, after this meeting, we came tonight to let our voices be heard. There's been several people here that are concerned about property rights, about the economic repercussions that this will discourage vendors from coming to our town. That there's a lot of nuances involved and, um, technicalities and definitions that need to be hashed out before this is brought forward more. So I would encourage the council to go with Mark Graves' suggestion. Um, and then if the hours of oper- operation are a concern, I want the council to remember that it's always an option to repeal ordinances that are out of date. So if, um, mobile food vendors shouldn't have to hour, work within certain hours um, because other restaurants don't have limitations on their hours that you can repeal that and say hours of operations don't apply. Any differently to this set of businesses than they do to others. Um, so that would be one suggestion that I would have. It would lessen the burden of enforcement and administrative hassles and so I would encourage that. I would, I would ask the council as one question, is there an imminent danger involved that is pressing, that this has to be decided on tonight? Um, or is it just a matter of money? So, thank you.
Again, I'm Dave Miller. So I'm gonna ask the council to leave this in there. And and for the simple fact is, I don't wanna be a solicitor. Okay, as a food truck guy, I absolutely do not want to follow your solicitor roles, okay? I wanna be a mobile food vendor. Okay, so you've given us two options. One, you can either leave us in as solicitors or we can be a mobile food vendor. And I'm gonna ask you as a community member of Shadrin, who had just bought a house in town, who I'm gonna ask you to leave us as a mobile food vendor, okay? Versus going to a solicitor thing. Cause for fifty dollars, guys, we're talking fifty dollars a year. It's the only difference we're talking here. It's peanuts. It's literally five orders of food. I don't care which way you look at it. You go to a food truck, an average order is eleven dollars and thirteen cents. You got five orders. That's it. So, and that's for one year. It really makes no sense to, to leave us as solicitors when soliciting rules versus food trucks are gonna be two total separate deals. So that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Does anyone make, wanna make any motion to change or table the whole ordinance until next meeting?
I'd like to make a note and table it for next reading so that it falls after the discussion with those that it's going to affect.
And that's.
So would that?
Adam, can you table the?
Yep.
The, the whole discussion?
Third reading of the ordinance.
You can table the third reading until the next meeting. By tabling it, it'll have to be on the next agenda. Yes, you have a second.
I would argue against tabling. Um, does, I guess, does anybody else have a second motion?
If you have a second, it's a, it's a key point.
I, I made the comment before that I think a lot of people disagree with me, but the latest thing was it's kind of an opportunity to get the food vendors recognized and get this a little bit of administrative or regulations that we're going to do. Uh, work with the food vendors to make it livable both for them and for the city residents. So, and the quicker we can get that going. So, and the quicker we can get that going, um, the better.
So there's no second to table? So you have a motion before you to pass this on third reading?
Do you wanna outline the rest of the fees, George? I know you were talking about reading out the rest of them.
Okay, I, I, where was I asking at?
Uh, you had just gotten to extended services uh on the city transit area.
Oh, yes. We mentioned the additional electricity franchise fee and we were talking about extended services. City transit, um, and if anyone has any questions about that, um, I'd be happy to review that. Sewer connection tap fee, it goes from four hundred dollars to four hundred and fifty dollars. And it also adds a school sewer district tap fee determined by ordinance. And this is for a new area, um, as opposed to an existing tap fee on an existing sewer line that's been there quite some times. Um, the water consumption fees are going up roughly ten percent. If you have zero to three hundred cubic feet to use in a month, um, it goes from two dollars and four cents to two dollars and twenty-four cents per one hundred cubic feet. And a lot of things, when you buy more, you get a lower price, uh, that's not the case with water. Okay, water keeps increasing the more you use. And we're changing the, the meter size, which um, we increased that and that's an increase of about ten percent also. Um, most homes probably have a three-quarter inch meter. Goes from fifteen dollars and seventy-three cents to seventeen dollars and thirty cents. And in accordance with the policies that the city has, whenever we raise our consumer rate within town, the golf course rates are raised um by the same percentage. And that's it. So, any other comments? I'll go back to.
And with the utility fees, our auditor said that we're quite a bit behind from where we should be in our fee schedule and that's.
We got cheap water. We got cheap wastewater.
Cheap trash.
Yeah, very, very cheap trash.
Okay, so we're down to, we just completed the discussion part. So could we have a roll call, please?
Klein.
On number fourteen thirty-nine for its third and final reading.
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
I declare ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine approved on its third and final reading. Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine has been read by title three times. The question is, shall ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine of the city of Shadron, Nebraska finally pass? Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty-nine is hereby passed and adopted.
Like to introduce resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-four and move for its adoption.
I will second that.
Motion for resolution number twenty-four dash seventy-four. Motion by Shane, checking by Mark. And this is a resolution to approve an increase in Nebraska Public Power District lease payment from twelve point five percent to thirteen percent effective January first, twenty twenty-five.
If I, if I'm not.
Anybody have any questions?
If I'm not mis.
Comments?
If I'm not mistaken, the NPBD raised their rates, so we just pass it on, correct? This isn't.
Yeah, 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 this is, it, it'll appear on your electric bill as an increase, so.
And, and I think NPBD raised their rates across entire Nebraska, it wasn't just ours, so.
Yeah, yeah, you'll get the, you get the privilege of paying that thirteen percent or whatever they're increasing to. I have an all-electric house. I will get enormous privilege to send MPBD more money so that they can send it back to the city. Any other comments? Could we have a roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Okay. Item number D, city clerk, uh, position, the search process. Um, we've all received some information from the city council. And what we're coming up with is, um, we've talked about. Donna has updated the city clerk's uh description, uh, job description. I, I think the last one I saw before this one is about two pages long and now it's five pages. Five or six pages. And we have a, a draft of a, an advertisement um for it and it's lacking the um salary range that we want to put out to the public. So open it up to that. Any other things you wanna talk about in regard to this advertisement for the city clerk position? Very important position in city of Shadron and any other community. Normally we've talked about these things in hourly rate, um, the way the proposed advertisement is a salary range per year salary. Something like twenty-six dollars an hour times two thousand eighty hours, fifty-four thousand dollars an hour a year. So what are your. You know, we, we need to get this going. The other part of it that, um, was that application packages we accepted until the position is filled with the intent to begin the review process on or after September twentieth.
So looking back at what the, the salary scale, the, the salary info that, um, that had been sent out, I think the job description looked good. I didn't have any changes to suggest as far as that goes. I think the advertisements, um, is good. Uh, the salary scale, I think the average, if you look at that, that's minimum thirty-two, thirty-five. Average maximum forty-four, fifty-four, or if you go medium, thirty-two ninety-nine. Low, minimum hourly to a median max hourly of forty-three, twenty-seven. There's not, not a whole lot of difference there. Something like thirty-two, thirty-three dollars minimum to about forty-four dollars maximum. That covers our current, um, our current pay scale, which is thirty-nine ninety-nine to thirty-nine ninety-nine. Uh, that includes that and leaves uh some headroom for future growth. Obviously, I don't think we'll be starting anybody at the maximum salary.
I, I think some of those, uh, those comparative towns were in eastern Nebraska. Do you know, I think that the pay rate of the pay scale is probably a little higher than the western Nebraska. So I had to look at the pay scale to the comparable towns around here, so I, I'm not sure. I think that's maybe a little, little high.
Yeah, I, I would, I would be reluctant to go that high.
In the backup marks with the going eastern, like, I was Carney with Max was fifty-nine. Um, I mean, Carney's a five times, six times bigger town as we have. There's probably is a lot more to do there, a lot more responsibility, so it would probably be higher where our, our town is five thousand. It would take, so.
I guess the info I'm looking at, uh, has Alliance, Cozad, Gareen, Gothenburg, Holdred, Lexington, McCook, Ogallala, Valentine, Wayne and York. I think those are all pretty comparable. There's also, there is more down below, outside of our array. But usually when we're looking at our comparables, our comparable array that Bev puts together. Their cities are the first class for the most part. Um, I think Valentine might be a second-class city, I don't remember, do you know Donna put it up here? So, yeah, they're not, you know, we don't have a, in our comparables here for the, that I'm looking off of, I guess, I'm not seeing Carney. And they're not, when I'm look, if, do you have the front page on that one?
Oh, no, I, so this is the last one.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at this page.
Right, same, so that would be.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm, that was, that's what I was basing my comments off of, is this, I think that. This was the one that Bev emailed out.
Right, she, she emailed out, right.
Yep, that's, that's what I'm, I wasn't going off of the stuff down there. I don't know that we could hire a full bore city clerk for a lot less than thirty-three dollars an hour. Um. But if you wanna set that minimum lower, you know, I think you can make whatever argument.
Well, it'll all boil down to, you know, the applications that we get.
From what I understand, the salary range we're discussing is just for what goes into the ad, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct, yes, yeah, yeah.
So, we're not promising anybody forty-four dollars an hour, we're just saying.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I was just gonna say that thirty-three to forty-four seems like a nice range.
I think that would be a lot for the city of Shadron to bring to the range. We're using the average, we're really just something in the neighborhood of. Fifty to seventy or.
You put salary range based on experience.
Yeah.
It should be a slight scale.
That's, that's pretty cheesy though. I think there should be at least something.
Rarely see them with specifics.
I would, I think, I think we should have at least something in there, even if, even if it's twenty-five dollars an hour. Something just really low, I think. Um, I think it's, I, I really recoil to the idea of not having something in there. Cause based on experience, what does that mean, you know, you're gonna be on fourteen dollars an hour?
What would, would you mind again?
I, I was thinking it was twenty-six to thirty-four. Which equates out to about fif, from fifty-four thousand to in rounded thirty to seventy dollars.
To thirty-four is the highest?
I don't know that we'll get, uh, get applications, I mean, twenty-six is less than any of these.
Well. I, I, I really don't anticipate getting an ex, full-blown experienced city clerk.
Yeah, and if, boy, I would love to have a very experienced, very, you know, well-trained city clerk. Uh, and to, to cap that range and say, we'll pay no more than thirty-four dollars an hour.
Yeah.
Um, that's a lower maximum than, I mean, that's pretty close to some of the minimums for some of these places.
But, you know, I, I was giving it some thought and said, how many years do you need to be doing the city clerk's job before you're probably know ninety-five percent of what's going on? I, I don't know if there's a point where you ever reach a hundred percent of what's going on. Um, you know, my guess is it'd probably take fifteen years to know everything. I, I've been a CPA for fifty-plus years and I still don't know everything, cause they keep changing things. So you have to know.
I, I mean, I agree, I, I still don't know what, um, everything there is to know out there, either in my, my profession, so.
Yeah.
Most of these are pretty close, about ten dollars from the minimum to the maximum too.
I don't know, it's like there's twelve.
Ten, ten to twelve dollars, yeah.
Some of these ones is fourteen. Fifteen.
Like if it was me, I'd.
Do like twenty-eight, forty.
Well, at home I kinda thought it out and I was thinking like twenty-eight, forty.
Twenty-eight to forty, I think is reasonable. Alliance's max is forty. So that leaves our current maximum as it is on our current pay scale. We're just introducing a new minimum.
Right.
Or do you wanna start a little lower and have a less compressed?
That's what I, that's what I was just gonna say is, tw, you're twenty-six, I mean.
Twenty-six to forty?
Yeah. You might have a bigger range of people that might apply for it too.
You wanna just change where we have salary, the wage rate to an hour? The rate might be easier to understand.
Is the position, I know it's like FLSA exam, says it's paid on a salaried basis, I believe it's paid on a salaried basis.
Yeah, it's an exam position.
So.
Set, set on a salary, but then divided by the two thousand eighty hours to get an hourly rate.
Yeah. Are other, are, are the other salaried positions advertised on a salary basis or an hourly, on a per-hour basis?
Probably.
Salary basis.
So. So. Yeah, I just, I, I slide into conversion. I think if we're gonna do twenty-six to forty, then twenty-six times two thousand eighty to forty, times two thousand eighty. We're here, forty, forty hours a week.
Or here.
It is forty hours.
Yeah.
But I'm guessing Donna probably puts in a morning.
It's a day, yeah. I don't know, when was the last time you worked for forty hour a week, Donna? Was that like when you worked a three-day week?
No. Okay, so we're, we're writing in the figures in fifty-four thousand eighty to, um, I didn't get, Mark has a calculator.
Eighty-three, two hundred.
Eighty-three, two hundred.
Do you wanna check on that?
I watched it.
Okay.
Kinda stopped. Good.
Do we need that in the form of motion or?
You want me to?
Okay.
Mayor, I would move to amend the city clerk advertisement to include a salary range, uh, as discussed.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Shane, to list the salary range of fifty-four thousand eighty to eighty-three thousand two hundred in that block. So could we have roll call on the amend?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Then we'll have a motion to advertise. I guess we, we. No, yeah, okay.
He doing a hot motion.
Yeah.
Anyway, I would move to approve the job description and advertise the position as amended.
I'll second that.
Motion by Miles, seconded by Mark. To approve the job description and to advertise as noted. Could we have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Um, motion, I move to move, approve claims as presented in our packet.
Second that.
Okay, I made the motion, Mark seconded to approve the claims. Um, discussion items, um, the Bittner Construction, where did its sewer repair happen? I, I'd just like to know this.
That, that happened, um, in the alley on, uh,
shape under the rain.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I'd just like to point out, um, cause when I first saw him, I had to double-check it. But we're putting thirty thousand, three hundred dollars plus twenty-five hundred dollars in the City of Chatham's health, side fund and dental side fund and very similar amounts are going through our reinsurance carrier. I think that's how you determine, address them, RCI. So I just wanted to point that out. So the roll call, please, unless someone has any other questions. Roll call, please.
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
City manager report.
I'll be brief. Um, Mayor, uh, one thing we just wanted to report real quick on the online auction. Uh, generated total of about seven thousand eight hundred fifty-nine dollars. Permission for, uh, Brad Olson, that was five thousand eighty-six dollars and sixty cents with proceeds of eleven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Came, uh, back to the city for those items that was sold on the online auctions. Um, couple of the things that I just wanna mention is that this is something that's a better effective use of our people. Uh, and we, we did learn a few things, uh, that we wanna make sure that we had some hard firm pickup times. So that we weren't, uh, doing some different things that way. Uh, but it was also something where, uh, the online auction did give us more bidders than you would normally see at one of our other auctions that we've had in the past. Um, and so I think as a, um, just an update, we will plan on doing another one as we get enough merchandise or enough merchandise, enough surplus items presented to the council. And we're gonna try to do that on a quarterly basis, so it's not gonna be a huge amount, but this will also allow the departments to be able to store that in their locations as we see things, uh, moving forward. So at the end of, uh, September, we'll ask anybody to present all of their surplus items. So that when the, the next auctions for the next quarter, we'll be open, we'll be able to proceed with that. Second thing is, is, uh, we did get a, um, report from the, uh, game of parks to begin the memorial park, uh, resp, uh, project in which we're going to be replacing playground equipment. Uh, we will be tearing out the old tennis courts and we will be starting to get that process all moving forward. Now, there are a few things that we have to bid out, such as the playground equipment itself and the concrete work that needs to be done. But one of the things that we have is, is the in-kind donation from the city for producing, uh, or providing some of the labor for a lot of the tear-out stuff. And that the, uh, game of parks is gonna give us some of those things. And then the last thing I just wanna just to stress to everybody as we're getting ready to get into the winter months, making sure that we get the weeds and the grasses, tree branches, everything, taken care of. Uh, if they have questions on any of that kind of stuff, they can give the city hall comments. We need to have branches ten feet above, especially out in the streets, in the alleys, things like that, around the dumpsters. And if you have a bigger project that, uh, needs a little more help and you don't have the vehicles to do it, I'll remind everybody that we do have the dial truck. That, uh, the phone number is four three two zero five two eight. Um, and that truck can be brought over there to the, the place, placed where they need it. They can load it up and, uh, we can get it hauled off for them and, and get it taken care of that way. Thank you.
As a, as a reminder, uh, the memorial park project has a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant, is that correct?
It's a hundred and forty thousand dollar grant and then we have a match of a hundred and forty thousand. Then we have a couple of organizations that are doing some dollars and then we're also using some LBA forty money along with some money out of the reserves to match that fund. Along with our in-kind, um, monies as well. Yes, so it, it is a total project of a little over two hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Wow, that's great. We can, uh, at least have a hundred and forty of that paid.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I'd make, like to introduce resolution number twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five to excuse council member, councilman Joe John Drew. He sent me an email along with city staff that he was sick today, so.
I'll second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane to resolution twenty twenty-four dash seventy-five to excuse Joe John Drew. Could I have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Oh boy, council closing comments. I get to go first. I've been voting first. In case you haven't noticed, um, we do take turns of who votes first and we proceed with the same about council comments. But first of all, Emily and I extend our deepest sympathy to the families and to our community who have lost four of our distinguished current and past community leaders. Marty Caneely, attorney, Dr. Butch Hanlon and Dr. Robert Ponor, who are both medical doctors, and Dr. Bill Winkle, who is a professor and musician. Our community is better for their contribution during the li, during their lives in Chatham. Uh, Emily and I also went to the annual Heartland Express meeting last week and we found it very informative and encouraging. It's a long and slow journey to get that going, but, um, Deb Cottier is working with N D, N N, and with, and N N D C works to keep us informed. And I just wanted to, to reiterate the part of Tom's comments about weeds. If you know me, I've pulled my, more than my share, but I can't pull them anymore this year because they all have pollen in them and it gives me terrible allergies, so. So I won't, my offer to come out and help you is revoked. But, but on a positive note, I, I happened to go past one business's weekend and there was some tall weeds growing out by the curb and I went and talked to them, but they weren't there and so I had to call them and lo and behold, they cut some of them, so. So it does work. Don't be afraid if your neighbor doesn't trim his weeds, um, offer to help and, but don't ask me to help with my allergies, so. Miles?
Thanks, George. I had, uh, heard that Dr. Bill Winkle passed away. I can condolences to his family and, uh, when I was in high school, we had a job shadowing or just a shadowing day. You follow a community member for a day and, um, I got to spend a day with Bill Winkle and, um, I don't know that I would've been as involved with music in college as I was without getting to follow him. He was just a, a warm, just nice, kind soul who loved music and you could feel his passion and enthusiasm for it. Um, I really, you know, I, I, he, by the time I got to Chapman State, he had already retired and moved on. Um, but I'll always remember him for, he, just that one day that made such an, such an impression on me. Um, just to be there with him and to see his care for our community and, um, how everybody in the college community respected him and how the students, um, really looked up to him. That was wonderful. Um, we're into sixth season, school's back in session. My family's been sick, goes sick tonight. Uh, wanna encourage everybody, stay home if you're sick, uh, get your flu shot coming up. We've got, uh, new vaccines approved to help with COVID as well, so encourage everybody to go out and get, uh, get their shots, help support the community. We all rely on each other to look out for one another and, um, helping each other care of our health and, um, helping to avoid getting our fellow community members sick is a great way to help.
Well, it's good to see so many people come to our meetings. It's encouraging to see, uh, community participation in our meetings. Generally, we don't see a lot of that. Um, and we all need to work together to formulate new policies, um, so I'm glad that some people came and so we can hear what they had to say. Uh, and I would encourage anyone that's out there, uh, citizen, that, that has a question or concern to, uh, approaching any one of us to, to, uh, voice their concerns because that's what we're here for. Um, we may vote on some things or pass some things if not everyone agrees with. Uh, but hopefully we are trying to do, uh, the right thing for, for the community as a whole.
Um, George pointed out about, uh, Dr. Hanlon, um, I didn't know the others as well. I knew Dr. Hanlon. He was a, uh, he was a kind man, um, cared about everyone, um, helped out the Boy Scouts, did a lot of community service around the Chatham area. Um, he's just a, just a good person in general and then I can really love this area, you know, he moved to Omaha in retirement to be closer to his kids. He, uh, loved Chatham, loved Crawford, um, loved this whole area and, uh, condolences to his family as well. And if you've never, uh, been to the Chatham State football game at night, um, they have another Thursday night game, um, the field looks awesome. It's, looks like something that should be in a big city or something. But if you get a chance to go up there, check it out, it's, it's a fun atmosphere.
Is that this last Thursday they played?
Yeah, and they.
I didn't realize that was the college.
And they play this Thursday, yeah.
Oh, that's awesome.
So.
Okay, before I'm, since Shane mentioned when Dr. Hanlon again, I, um, I never had allergies. I lived on, in my life and then somewhere when Dr. Hanlon was still here, I got into some ragweed about this time of year, it was probably August and it was just terrible out and I, of course, where Di, where the Hanlins lived on Pine Chris wasn't very far, so I just walked over there and knocked on his door and said, I got this terrible, eyes are watering and stuff and he, and I don't remember if he gave me a prescription or something, but he, he talked to me on Sunday, which I thought was pretty nice.
Hmm, oh yeah.
So with that being said, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second that.
Motion by me, seconded by Shane. Could we have roll call, please?
Klein?
Yes.
Bannon?
Yes.
Graves?
Yes.
Shepherd?
Yes.
Thanks again for coming.